To the Caledonia Township Planning Commission for February 3rd, 2025. Call the order. Macefield.
Present.
McLean.
Present.
Bradshaw.
Here.
Everly.
Here.
Lindsay.
Here.
Cutler.
Here.
Curtis is here. I need a motion for the consideration of the meeting agenda.
Motion to consider the meeting agenda as written.
Support.
Motion by Macefield, support by Bradshaw. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes. We have a meeting agenda. Item three, public comment brief up to two minutes. This is for items. You can talk whatever you want to talk about, but there will be a public hearing for the agenda item. If anybody has anything else they would like to discuss other than the agenda item. Seeing none, we will close the public comments. There's five minutes later at the end too.
Yeah, sorry. Good evening. My name is Brandy Heiser and, oh, no problem. Oops. Thank you. I live at 6881 Standing Rock Valley and have made Caledonia my home for about 28 years for my family and I. And I'm here just honestly to show my support for having a responsible and respectful neighbor like Cherry Valley Resources in our community and in my own backyard.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, can you repeat your name again?
Brandy, Brandy Heiser, H-U-Y-S-E-R.
And just to clarify, I know I talk quick. There is a public comment period for the agenda item as well.
I didn't know.
Which is probably what you're about.
Yep.
So, you can come back again if you want to say the same thing. That's fine. Anyone else? Alright, I will close the two-minute public comment. I need a motion for the consideration of the meeting minutes from the December 16th, 2024 meeting.
So moved.
Motion by Everly. Hold on, I'll get to you. Support by.
Bradshaw.
Bradshaw. Discussion on the motion. McLean has a slight adjustment because.
Yeah, appears that all the members present were also absent.
Yeah.
That was, uh, we were, we were gemenized that day.
Yes, we were a little.
Two sides of the same coin.
Yes.
Alright.
Who is not here? McLean was not here.
I was not here.
We can make that adjustment.
Yep. I have no idea.
That's, the rest of us were here, correct?
Yes.
Alright. Motion to approve the meeting minutes from December 16th, 2024 as amended. Aye. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes. Inquiry of conflict of interest. Laney, I know a question came up. What does conflict of interest mean? Typically, we treat that as a financial. Are there any other areas?
It is financial or familial would be kind of the big ones for conflict of interest. So that's something that should be considered.
So.
I do not have a financial or familial conflict of interest, but I would disclose to my fellow commissioners that I do live adjacent to the shaded property. Be noted in the PMR request.
Alright. Anyone else? Alright, I don't think that rises to the level. I'll pull my.
I'm seeing a lot of head shake now, so.
Alright, no conflict of interest. Item 6A, public hearing consideration of the application of the Cherry Valley Development LLC to add land to a current PMR planned mineral removal permit area where such land is already zoned PMR. The land requested for mineral removal activity includes 7350 and 7366 Cherry Valley. Applicable parcel numbers include total of 49 acres, 412309, 326002, and 412309301-008. Ms. Laney, or are you deferring to Todd?
I will just say a few things and then defer to Todd. So, um, this is a request, as mentioned in the agenda, to, um, the land is already zoned PMR planned mineral removal. In our ordinance for planned mineral removal, we have to identify, or the applicant has to identify the land on the property where the mining activities would occur. Currently, the applicant is seeking to add the shaded property to that mining area. The other request is that the setback for mining, the setback when it relates to the proximity to occupied dwellings be reduced. Our ordinance requires 500 feet, but the ordinance does allow for the planning commission and township board to approve a closer distance than the 500. So you'll see on the diagram that they are looking for a closer distance in several instances where they've provided those new measurements of what that setback would be. So those are the main items in this request for you tonight. The township did receive a few letters of support, also letters of opposition. Two of those letters were in your packet, so I just want to make sure that those, those will be part of the record. And then the letters of support came in more recently that do also need to be part of the record from Kenneth Hope Water as well as Excel Excavation Carson Galloway. So I just want to make sure that you do have copies of those at your desk. We're happy to read those if you'd like, but they are part of the record as well.
Laney, can you just confirm? I, I see one letter that was in my packet. Did I miss something or?
That letter is, I believe it speaks for two people in that email header.
I see someone was copied, but.
Have you copied down that email?
I do not see.
Uh, I'm sorry. Let, thank you for clarifying.
I did not take it as a speaking of. I would not have interpreted it that way. That's.
Got it. Thank you for. So then there is one letter in your application package from Neil Buckman in opposition to the request. Thank you for that clarification.
Alright, Todd, give us the lowdown. I'm going to do the public hearing after you speak, I think.
Okay. So, uh, I provided in my, in my letter a little bit of history and then where we are now and detailed the request. Laney has already provided an introduction to that request. The, um, but you guys last renewed this in May and, uh, and that was then approved by the, the board of trustees after some revisions in October. And so basically they had a, uh, what I would call at this point, a clean renewed permit that will expire in, um, May of 2026. So, um, under those circumstances, uh, Cherry Valley Resources is requesting now an expansion that has nothing to do with the renewal. If, if this renewal was not approved, they could, they will still have an operating permit to, uh, to remove sand. So just to clarify, you know, a disapproval does not shut down the pit. It just denies the, the expansion. And so, uh, the, one of the issues I wanted to, um, I guess highlight is that they have been very diligent about bringing in clay spoils and, and seeking to restore the area near 68th Street that was actually, um, previously mining within 500 feet of a, of a home that was identified and, and pursued when that was, uh, I think that was an issue back in May. So, uh, also since May, uh, that, that permit was conditioned on the Eagle permit for the pond being completed. That Eagle permit was issued, you know, in October. So anyway, Eagle approved the, uh, the pond expansion in October. So they are able to mine, um, to expand that pond. So, uh, I, I met with, with Kim Hermanet and Pete Denhartig on September 23, 2024. At that time, uh, I completed inspection and, and everything was in, um, compliance. So, uh, November 14, we received a, uh, a complaint that they were mining outside of the, the permitted area. And Gary Campbell, our zoning enforcement agent, uh, issued a stop work order. And, um, the location of that mining is, is shown on the plan there. So the, uh, the violation was in reference to mining in an area that is not in the approved PMR limits. And also it was within 500 feet of an occupied dwelling. So, um, those were detailed by, by Gary in that, in that violation. Mining has since ceased. The, uh, little history on the, uh, expanded property, it was, um, previously mined to the limits shown. Uh, you can kind of see where the contours fall off in the, the pit floor to the north there. It was mined, um, back in the late 90s, it appears. The, um, and then the, the property was donated to, to Caledonia Township. And then, uh, and then the, the, the owner bought the property back from Caledonia. So, um, at that time, then the, the property was removed from the permitted boundary for, for mining. So, um, the, as Laney explained, the, the particular request is to add the property back into the mine, but also to waive the required 500 feet foot setback. Waivers are allowed specifically in the language of the ordinance. If, if the planning commission and the township board decided that that was fit. The, the pit itself would continue to be operating primarily, you know, north of this area other than mining in this area. You know, the recycling, the, the processing, that type of thing would kind of remain as is. Traffic would remain as is accessed by 68th Street. Proposed grading plan, uh, proposes a one-on-three slope at the steepest, uh, and that is consistent with the zoning ordinance requirements. And that is the, the main, uh, I guess heart of my letter. If anybody has any questions or if you want to open it up.
Can, can I ask just a quick clarifying question before? So Todd, as we think about this, I'm hearing kind of two things potentially, right? So the expansion and then the shift on the setbacks. Or will, will we, we're looking at those as one thing or are we looking at those independently?
The way the resolution is written, well, I guess the resolution as written would weigh, would do both things.
For the shaded areas only, not for the whole PMR?
The, the resolution would add the shaded areas to the PMR.
And the setback would be for the shaded areas that are indicated on this plan, not for?
Yes. Yep. Yeah. I, and that point maybe needed to be clarified a little bit further in the, the resolution now that you say that. But, uh,
Okay.
That was the intent. That's what, how the grading plan is shown too. So, yeah.
I just want to ask a clarifying question. These two big, um, the fourth renewal by two in our packet, these are just informational, what's existing?
Those are the resolution and the, the permit would be what is existing. That is what is existing.
These two are the existing one. I know you can't see it.
Correct. Yes. Yes.
This is the resolution.
This is the resolution and that would be, um, of the planning commission and then it would go toward, to the township board as well. There would be a similar resolution. Yep. That refers to the exhibit that was submitted with the application. And the exhibit would be correct.
The three pages. One, two, and three?
Correct.
Just want to make sure we're all on the same page.
Can I clarify?
Yes, sir.
This with the track changes is, is basically the existing permit with the changes that would be effective if it were approved.
Todd, which one are you, can you?
The one with the purple.
The one with the purple writing on the top?
Yeah, yeah. So it has the additional lands in there.
Okay.
Um, it basically, what was approved in May, compared to what you approved then, I took that copy and I modified it as needed.
So to answer your question, the 150 would according, because the modification, it would apply to the whole PMR, not just the new PMR. Item 8A of the markup. One question, Todd.
Well.
Go ahead.
So then I would say, Todd, since our question relates to that setback on, in the thick packet, item number 8A, it says that setbacks shall not be closer. The consideration would be 150 feet instead of 500 feet from any occupied dwelling. But then there would probably be a phrase listed that says, as per this exhibit A. So it, it wouldn't be in across the board. It's, it's only the consideration of this shaded area, not the rest of the PMR.
Yeah, I, I think, um, yeah, that's a good clarification and that could be added as a, as a condition to the, the approval. However, they are, um, the intent is for them to only mine in the areas identified on the plan. And these are the, the shaded areas, the only place where there's, within 500 feet of, of occupied dwellings, not owned by the, the family is, is how the ordinance states.
But as it is now, they can mine anywhere in the PMR?
Well, they, they do have to follow the, the, the plan that is submitted in the exhibit.
And then Laney, as long as we're looking at eight, then can you explain how point, where point B comes into all of this?
Point B is a mining distance from a zoning line, from a zoning district line versus a dwelling. So item B for setback says that mining shall not be closer than 500 feet from any R1, R2, R3 district, provided however that they may be located up to 100 feet away from any Ag or RR district. And here, um, the Cherry Valley Resources is adjacent to the RR district. That is why the green hatch line is shown, which depicts the 100-foot boundary, the zoning boundary. Our ordinance does not have a waiver process from that zoning boundary. Only the waiver process for the 500 feet from occupied dwellings.
Thank you.
Anyone else have a question for? Todd or Laney? Going once. Alright, at this time, we will open the public hearing for item 6A on tonight's agenda. Typically, how many minutes?
Oh, three minutes.
Three minutes is the typical.
Mr. Curtis, could I just clarify then? Would we be best to allow the public to speak, conclude their remarks, and then the applicant speaks after that? We don't want to miss obviously our opportunity. That's all I would say. So if it's normally protocol to have those who come who are interested, make their comments and then.
That's what we're doing.
Be able to respond.
Yeah, that's what we're doing.
Okay.
The public hearings right now.
Thank you. I want to make sure we didn't have to speak during the public hearing to preserve our right to speak.
Correct. Yeah. So the applicant will speak?
After.
After the hearing. Got it. And the, the, the public comment for public hearing items are typically three minutes. We, we do allow more time if you're speaking on behalf of a group. There is an extended public comment period later in our agenda on other items or any item you wish to speak on, and that is a five-minute window.
So at this time, come up, give your name. We'll give you a little grace. It doesn't start.
This is my first time ever appearing at any kind of township, so apologies if I don't get this correctly.
Welcome.
Uh, thank you. Um, my name's Natalie Hicks and I am at 7462 Willow Point Court. So I'm like at the very end of that Willow Point Street, Caledonia. And we moved here in, uh, April 2023. And part of what attracted us to that land was just, you know, the beautiful, it's a nice two-acre lot, lots of woods. We did have some hesitation because we saw the pit and we did see Cherry Valley Resource on there. And we did some research on that to make sure that, you know, see where their lines were. And that's when we discovered, you know, that it is that 500 from the dwelling. So, you know, part of us buying that house was because of that. And so we're, what I'm asking for is not to, not for anything, just don't change anything. I have a four-year-old and a 10-year-old, and I know the person next to, the person next to us who couldn't be here, she has four kids and two of them are under 10. So to have this pit right in our backyard is unsafe and not a good position for our kids to be in. So there's been no discussion of, from at least that I've heard from Cherry Valley about like what boundaries or what protection, if, if they were to bring this in to less than 500 feet, what that would be. We've made an offer to like see what our, you know, ask for an offer, like what would it take for us to have some of that land? So that way we could have, again, you know, some additional border. And that was met with silence, no, no feedback. So it feels like, you know, I'm, I understand that it's a business and we want to try to like work with that business to make sure that they stay profitable and, or, you know, help them make some money on it still. And again, you know, just seemingly not willing to work with us. And that's been a little bit frustrating, um, for, for us. And I understand that they're probably very good. I don't know a lot about Cherry Valley. I'm sure they're excellent neighbors and, you know, good stewards of the community and everything. But again, you know, when you look at this map and you see all those houses there, there are kids in those houses and there are people that, you know, live there and now they're going to have this huge sand pit in their backyard. And I also want to point out too that, um, the letter we received that, actually it was two weeks ago. And until like recently, like right now, we didn't really fully understand, you know, what that meant. You know, it just says, you know, adding acreage and there was no mention of a setback. So it's, you know, talking amongst ourselves, amongst some of the neighbors of, oh, wow, this is going to be like, you know, in our backyard, there's going to be a ditch, there's going to be like, am I going to have to put a fence up? Like, you know, all of these things. Um, and I know there's other neighbors that didn't fully understand that too. So we just, I feel like we need a little bit more time to like discuss this amongst ourselves to fully figure out the impact. So that's all that I have to say about that. Thank you.
Thank you, Natalie. And well under three minutes. Probably felt like a marathon, but good.
My name is Pete Van Anken. I live at 7303 Thornapple, which isn't on that map. It's, uh, it's over to the east. I understand the importance of, of sand, okay, for construction. I also understand that sand mining is very, very lucrative monetarily. I have two concerns. I moved to Caledonia in mid 1970s and there's always been a sand pit there. This sand pit, um, we have two existing lakes. It's my understanding that, um, they've already gotten approval to dig those two lakes deeper and bigger. The second piece is the land in the north end. They're already excavating all the way up to 68th Street. They're also excavating on the, um, on the, for the third lake, okay, which is directly west of my property. So Pete Denhartig has taken all the trees off, all the tops off in preparation for digging a third lake. This, the land south of that area that for the third lake has also been cleared. And now we're adding a fourth piece or another, an additional piece. So from, I'm looking at two existing lakes, the north end, the third lake, the land south of the third lake. So you've really got six different areas in that area that they're already excavating or could excavate sand. So my question, my concern is, is that this property, um, is in addition to a little sand that's already been excavated. So I'm not quite sure how much sand we need over a period of time that at the moment, we have to open up a whole nother area of this area to sand mining. My second concern is restoration. As I said, I moved out to Caledonia in the mid 70s. And when I moved out there, um, we referred to this area as the Dykema Pit. And then it became the Velting Pit. And now I refer to it as the Denhartig Pit. So I've been there for over 50 years and the sand pit has been over there well over 50 years because they were mining there before I moved there. Many of the areas that are being excavated or have been taken, okay, is bare. I mean, there's very, very little vegetation. To Pete's credit, he has seeded some of the hillsides and he's planted many, many pine trees. I've also seen Pete tear out a 75-year-old oak tree, roots and all, in a matter of minutes. And from my perspective, it's very, very difficult to replace a 75-year-old tree in a short period of time, even within my lifetime. If you Google the whole sand pit area, the vast majority of that area turns out to be brown. You have the two lakes, you have the area that Pete seeded, you have the few, uh, you know, the pine trees, but all the deciduous trees are gone. And, you know, we really haven't made an attempt to put any of those deciduous trees back, other than the pine trees. So most of it is, is brown. Um.
I need you to wrap up.
Animal habitat is gone. Okay? I mean, the deer have inundated my property. I have fences around every one of my trees. I have a six-foot fence around my garden. You could shoot 50 deer and I'm not even sure that you've made an impact on the deer population that used to call that whole area home. It's no longer there. So my concern is, is you open a whole nother area. I'm not sure what you're planning on asking the, the operators to do with the existing area. Where the concrete crushing area is, there's not a, a, a piece of vegetation around. I mean, there's not a blade of grass and there hasn't been in many, many years. So my concern is, is, you know, you open up a new area, where is the restoration piece of the request? So my concern is, is, you know, you open up a new area, where is the restoration piece of the request? What's the timeframe?
Yep. Thank you, Pete. Next.
I'm going to need the map, please. A little blank here.
Do you want to put it back off or?
I can.
We'll take that.
IT has determined.
Well, we could also use the camera.
Can you just flip it?
Can you flip it, the camera?
No one's watching you down.
I know.
I can see every character.
You're five minutes ago.
Hit the show button, will you?
Okay, does that work for us?
All right, my name's Dwayne Klinker, I live at seventy-three thirty Cherry Valley. I'm a little confused about the green dotted line. Can anybody give me some clarification on that?
It's the zoning setback for.
Is that the 500 feet or the 100 feet?
That's the 100 feet zoning setback.
So there's two restrictions right now. One is a hundred feet from anything that's not zone PMR, that, that's what that line is. There's another restriction that's 500 feet from an occupied dwelling. There's no line on the plan showing that. So there's two things in, in play.
So my property is.
Does that clarify it? We just want to make sure before you go on, you, you get the line?
Yeah.
Okay.
So my property is seventy-three thirty Cherry Valley. I'd love to go up there and show you where it's at, but the longest pink line going six, towards sixty-eight street is, yes, Cherry Valley, I'm sorry, is the south side of my property.
Okay.
Okay? My biggest concern is, everybody uses Cherry Valley, no. Yes. Cherry Valley is a cut through so they don't have to go out in thirty-seven. The traffic already there is horrendous, the speed limit is fifty-five. My kids, when they got their driver's license, we had to put an auxiliary driveway that was closer to the pink line for the safety of the fact that the hill is blind. So my concern is more traffic. My second concern is, I, I would not vote, as much as, and I know the Den Hartigs, we're friends, Randy's right, they're great people, they're great neighbors, but my, my idea of having people going seventy miles an hour down this street and then adding more traffic to it, that would be my biggest concern, along with, we didn't move there for that either, you know, like what she said. So we don't live in that neighborhood, but we live right there. Cherry Valley is a highway, and the speed limit would have to be dropped to thirty-five miles an hour. I mean, it's a dangerous road as it is, and now you're talking about making more traffic, more, I'm not, I'm not a fan. As much as I love the Den Hartigs and they're great neighbors, but no. On the change in the setback thing.
All right, thank you, Dwayne.
Thank you.
Could someone clarify his comments about that pink line coming out to Cherry Valley? Is that for future when there's houses? Or is that for the mine as far as trucks moving in and out?
The, I can clarify that, that.
Normally, we would ask you to come up and all that, but I'll repeat it for the record.
No.
No, I'm just going to repeat it just so it's on the microphone so people can hear it. So the question was, the extension out to Cherry Valley, the little left stub, let's call it, is that for future access to residential development, or is that for operations?
Yes, thank you. The mining operations, the access to that is off of sixty-eighth street, that is not changing, that would not change with this. There is a proposed restoration plan that shows a concept for thirteen residential dwellings back there one day. It's conceptual, but the access would be Cherry Valley for those thirteen dwellings.
Personally, I think you guys are doing this backwards. You should have the person.
Can you, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I'm Brian Reefer, I live at seventy-sixth street, I think it's, is it that zone RR? I got ten acres that butt up to the Den Hartig.
Seventy-six?
Six-six-five-five.
Six-six-five-five, okay, thanks, Brian.
I mean, the people have been great neighbors, very respectful. They, they do their best when they mine and they, they do put green space back. I guess, I, I would have rather have had them come up first and explain what they want to do, then have community around there.
Well, that's not how we do it.
But.
And they told us what they. They told us what they wanted to do in writing.
Okay.
Down, okay, so make your point, please.
Yeah, I guess I have no problem. I mean, other than I don't understand if they're going to mine all that pink area? Is that what? Is that an issue?
The, primarily the, where the black lines are, where the, where those are. The bulpose contours, that represents a, a change in elevation, so. From those points to the north would be where that would, the mining would occur.
So right inside the green line. Okay.
Yeah, not, not between the green line and the property line.
And the setback is from my pro, I mean, it's property line, not dwelling?
There's two property, the, the green line is a hundred foot from the property line because everything's rural residential around it.
Yep.
What's not shown, because the line would go all over the place, is there's a separate 500 foot currently that would be from a residence.
Okay.
So say the, your property says a hundred feet. If there is a house, say fifty feet off the back of the property line, that'd be a hundred and fifty to the green line, then you'd have another two hundred and fifty to get to, right? Three fifty.
Three fifty.
Three fifty, end of the day. Three fifty would be their limit of operation on, on a point around your house. So 500 feet from your house that's occupied, they couldn't mine.
Yeah.
A hundred feet just from your property. So because you have no house up there, they could
Right.
Come up to the hundred foot.
Hundred foot, yeah, okay, that makes sense. Yeah, and I, I don't have a problem, I'm not opposed, so.
All right, thank you.
They've been great.
Paul Zeeman, seven-four-three-five Miller Estates. I'm kind of in that bottom right-hand corner there, not the house on the corner, but the one next to it. On the corner, that's Neil Buckman, that's my neighbor, he's in Florida, I'm listening for him as well, but he conveyed his thoughts in writing, I know, to the, to the township. I've owned the property for thirty-five years, built thirty-plus years ago, been kind of through the whole thing. As far as the pit is concerned, the Den Hartigs, they've been very good neighbors. I mean, I don't have any concerns as far as, they've always looked out for people, and they, they try to do the right thing, they try to do the right thing. That said, I mean, obviously, no one wants, you know, the trees that have been there for, for hundreds of years in some cases knocked down, but let's face it, whether it's a pit or they're just going to develop this land, they have the right to do that. The one thing that I would like to see, and I've kind of walked back there with Kim and with Pete, they're asking to get within a hundred feet of the property line. But I know in that corner there, it doesn't make sense to get within a hundred feet of the property line because of the flow of the land. It falls from our property and it goes down for about a hundred and seventy-five, a hundred and ninety feet, somewhere in there before it goes back up. What has been explained to me is they want to match that fall so that they would really mine to the bottom of that. And that's, you know, closer to 200 feet. I would like to see what their mining intent is and keep that in writing. Why should they be given carte blanche to be within a hundred feet if they really don't intend to be within 200 feet anyway? Does that make sense what I'm trying to say? I mean, have it literally spelled out where they're going to mine, what their intent is, instead of just a, you know, if you're going to give them up, you know, a free pass to a hundred feet. I'd rather see it spelled out, what really do they need to do? And again, I understand that's just for the mining aspect. I mean, if they're going to develop it, like I said later, they could, you know, they can obviously come right up to the property line and do whatever they want, it is their property in that regard. So I would just, I can't say that I'm here to block them or to try to say, hey, I don't want this. I mean, but what I'm trying to say is, let's get it all in writing, and let's get it spelled out, and let's make sure everyone's on the right page for what, what's going to happen, where it's going to be mined, and then what type of restoration is going to be done, you know, in the future. And they've been pretty good about that, and I hope they will continue to be. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Come on up, Nate.
Nate Highbower, I live at seven-zero-nine-two-sixty-eight street. I've lived in this neighborhood my entire life as well, and I lived on the north side of the, the pit for the majority of my life. And I'm lucky enough now to be able to walk my dog back in that, some of that areas that's been reclaimed. And it's just like a park back there, I think they've done a great job keeping it neat and tidy. I, I think though that I would, I would think that I would support moving that line to a hundred feet just because that facility is all set, it's been there forever. It's kind of out of sight, out of mind, tucked back in there, and unfortunately, it's going to affect some of the neighbors slightly, but it's, it's not a noisy operation, it's not a dirty operation, it's not dusty. And that's been such a, such a staple of the construction neighborhood to be able to recycle concrete there. If you do take the sand away, it kind of takes away the, the efficiency of disposing of the concrete and recycling and asphalt there because you can save your trips back and forth with the trucks. I think it's also good to keep these pits centralized in our township, just, it saves a lot of truck traffic. There is truck traffic, but it's not long hauls, you know, from, gosh, I think we'd have to start coming to Green Lake for all of our projects. So those are long hauls. So I was going to say.
All right, thanks, Nate. I just want to clarify because two people have said it now.
I think we're going to the same place.
Do you want to do it, or you want me to do it?
Go ahead.
All right. The existing green line is by ordinance, is the hundred-foot line from the property line. The hundred and fifty that they are asking for is a hundred and fifty feet from a dwelling. Has nothing to do with the green line, but everything to do with where the house is located. Currently, that is 500 feet. Is that where you're going, Ms. Maseville?
Yes, because we've heard a hundred feet multiple times and a lot on the green line.
So I'm going to stand up and I'm going to point, just to make sure everybody understands.
Well, everything between the, the gray, I guess, and the green is a, is a no-touch zone.
These are property lines. This is RR, all the way around it. This line here represents a hundred feet from the property line. Nothing can take place by ordinance in this hundred-foot area.
No matter what happens tonight.
No matter what happens tonight. From that, in the ordinance currently, is a.
Your time's up, Doug.
There is a 500 foot from a occupied house. This house is 290 feet from the green line. To get to 500, you would add sixty to get to 350, and then another 150. So you'd have 210 feet for this house. This house is 295. You have 145 feet. This house is 174 feet. You have to get to 500. So nothing within, currently within 500 feet of that house, of this house. Everyone following me there, the two distinctions? Am I wrong?
I've got something that'll illustrate that a little bit.
Thank you, put it up there for us.
Yeah, I had him show it to me earlier.
Okay. I just want to, there's a hundred feet, the proposed 150 feet, and the existing 500 feet.
All right, so I just, I sketched this so it's not perfect, but if the effective 500-foot setback from occupied dwellings was in effect, this darker red line would be the, the mining limits. You could only mine in the areas that are within these red lines. And so instead, the, basically effectively, 150 foot does take it out to what is the, the green line, the 100-foot setback. So if, is that, should I like?
That's great. Yes, I don't have my glasses, so I can't read the small numbers, but.
Sure.
All right, go.
More public comment.
More public comment.
The next.
I'm Sherri Wood, seventy-four thirty-six Willow Point. I'm one of the houses that's the closest to the line that you show. And we, we speak, I'm speaking for my husband who's out of town, and we do also enjoy all of the kindness that the sand pit owners have shared, shared with us. My, the thing I want to say most is that we, we respectfully ask that you don't move the 500 number for many reasons that have been shared, but the, the nature, the privacy, and there is plenty of space to dig without changing the number. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Sherri. All right. You had time left, so come on up.
All right, I know Nate Highbower, it's nice of him to show up to help with their cause, but he's not affected by this at all. I think I'm probably more affected by it than anybody based on what I'm seeing here, and especially since you just put down the red thing that keeps people, or keeps that way away from my backyard. So I guess that's all I got to say is, it's nice for people to show up that want to vouch for the fact that they're great people. We already think they're great people. Getting a little close to my house, I don't like it, and the extra traffic going right down the side. I've got a pool in my backyard, and these people will be driving down the road and be stuck, we'll be diving off our pool and getting their cars wet. So that's all I have to say.
All right, thank you. Let me stop everyone for the extra. Let's not have.
Let's get the pink out of there.
Okay.
Thank you.
Do we have any other public comment? Going once.
Can I speak again?
You are over time, big time.
Really?
Really. You were like pushing five minutes, sorry.
One way to swash comment.
Everyone's allowed the same amount of time. You were allowed more. Any other comments? Going once. Going twice. All right, at this time, we will close the public comment period for item six A on the agenda. Trying to think here. How do I want to handle this? There's two items, the expansion of the PMR and the 500-foot change. I think we need to treat them separately because I think that's a big issue. I think it's an issue amongst the commission members. I think we need to treat them separately, because I think that's a big issue, I think it's an issue amongst the commission members. I think I'm just gonna do a quick straw, where are we at on the hundred and fifty? We're talking fifty yards, half a football field is what would be allowed from a house.
I think it's important for everybody to understand, with or without the expansion and the setbacks. I'd love for Linay to share, as right of use of this land, they could go out tonight and tear down, do, do what with that property that's there? Like, it's their land and their, their property, and I appreciate the trees and the nature, and I live there too. But there is just a general land use, with or without, that I think it's important that people understand as we continue this discussion. So, I'll ask you, Linay, if you can share a little bit through the ordinance of what that is.
Well, it's pretty, it's similar, I would say, to our, in a way, that restoration plan. So, with any RR zoning, we, we kinda look to the RR to inform future uses on this, because um, yeah, so the RR district allows for a fifty-foot setback, so houses could be built fifty feet to the property line, accessory buildings as well, that fifty feet. We don't have tree clearing restrictions on residential property, so any one of us can go and clear trees from our own property. And that could be right up to the property line. A fence could be built at a property line, so um, i- if this were to be a different use, a residential use, that is what could happen on the property with the underlying property rights.
Is that what you wanted here?
Yeah, I think it's just important for, this is a current operation of this property, but there are things that are currently within the township that fall.
Essentially, they could do everything any of, any of us else would do except for remove minerals.
Exactly.
Correct, not the mining activity.
I go back to the posed question. Alright, I'll break the ice. I think a hundred and fifty feet is kinda close. But I caveat that to a comment that was made, I would really like to see what the intent is for actual removal, and not just a blanket rectangular line, because I might be okay if the slope and that is within a hundred and fifty feet in certain circumstances, to, to make the grade not be a bump up or a significant bump down, but make it more natural to the rest of the shaping that's going on as well.
I think I would counter that, by saying that the operations to date on this site have not been consistent enough for us to be able to expect that to be promised and kept. We've had issues where there have not been the required fencing at the top of the hill that we were told that, oh, we'll just push over trees up there. I mean, that hasn't been managed. We had the instance where an area that was explicitly not to be mined was mined. And so, I'm not convinced that we could draw a line on here and then not have to come back and argue about it over and over again. I think we have the five hundred feet. It's been in place for quite a while. It obviously is a burden on the people operating the mine, but it's also a benefit to the people who've lived and bought property there. So, I, I'm not inclined to vote to go to the hundred and fifty feet right now.
Well, my concern is, or my question would be, if they're at forty-five percent of removal right now, as it stays in this letter, what would be the need, if they're also gonna add another fifty acres, or they're adding fifty acres, and they're only at forty-five percent right now, what would the need be to go back to the hundred or a hundred and fifty feet setback? I, I agree, I think the five hundred is, that's where it should be.
I agree with the five hundred feet, um, my concern would be, I guess I was putting myself in the neighbor's shoes of how close would I want them to my family and my kids and, and all of that. I wouldn't want more than five hundred feet.
I agree with five hundred feet, I think, you know, people have taken their livelihoods off in your home and your property is the biggest asset that you own, and they bought that under a certain set of rules, and I don't think it's fair to change it after the fact.
I would, I could, I do agree with Doug that the mining intent, and I probably would contradict you, John, that I understand the couple of things that have been brought to attention, but I feel like they've been rectified quickly, and we haven't had issue, this has been a, a mining pit for many years, and we haven't had issues until those current situations that were brought before us and justified quickly.
But they were explicit in the rules, and they were ignored, that's what I'm saying. And so, if we don't have better expectations than that, I think trying to make more explicit rules don't really help.
I think you have to set the expectations and stick to them.
And I just wanna clarify, by the way, when I say I'm okay with the, like, if they need to get within a hundred and fifty feet to make slope, you know, taking out like five or ten feet, I'm not talking about taking out thirty feet of depth at that point, if it makes sense. You know, fifty yards is pretty close, so. If we're gonna go there, which doesn't sound like anybody's, or the majority is not feeling about extending it, that's, you know, that's where we're at on that. So, as far as adding the forty-nine acres to the PMR, as it, treat it as a separate issue, and hopefully everyone understands why we do things in the order, I'll give you. As we like to discuss, get the input from the citizens, and then talk to the applicant, so we can understand, and they can understand what our concerns are, and, and so we're not here all night, they talk to us, then we have to ask them more concerns, and then it goes back and forth. We like to try to get the big concerns out of the way upfront, so they can be addressed. Do this all at one speaking moment, rather than dealing with this. So, obviously, it does not look like the hundred and fifty feet is faring well tonight. The forty-nine acres being added, it's within the PMR. I don't know that there's much angst, again, quick poll with the commission on adding, you know, expanding it, it's just more how far can the actual mining take place, is that correct? So, alright. Don, or Kim, or Jim, or whoever.
Yeah, thank you. Jim Waringa here tonight.
I just wanna give a little guidance here, because, listen, it's eight o'clock, we've all been here a while, we've had long days. We've all lived here, we know about, we just need you to laser focus on the items here.
About for my part, I'll, I'll be brief.
Yes.
Sure. And I'll turn it over to somebody smarter than me, so you, you all know Don DeGroot, I believe, I'm assuming, Excel engineer, mostly retired, not entirely yet. And then Kim Hermanat, of course, you know, I think by now, and her dad Pete would be here, but he's at better climate than all of us here in this room right now, enjoying Florida. But Jim Waringa, I happen to have had the privilege of being a legal counsel to the family, the Denhartig family, for about thirty years. And as I've heard from both the audience and even some of you, wonderful family, it's been a privilege, someone of my favorite clients, and I'm always glad when I can assist them in some way, shape, or form. The other part of what I do is I'm Georgetown Township Supervisor, so, just on the road from you guys, I sit where you are more than I stand here, and I say that only to say I identify with how difficult your jobs are, and sometimes how thankless they are, how tough your decisions are, and how important they are, so, thank you, all of you. I know from sitting on that side of things, you, you don't always hear that, so. I, I will laser focus, that I think you've honed in on some of the points I might have wished to make. But the thing I would say to you, tho- those who are leaning against the requests as it relates to the setback would be, I guess, two things. One, the fact that you've been given discretionary authority within the, the, you know, the ordinance speaks to you, or should speak to you, that it's anticipated that this sort of thing might or could arise, and of course, you only have two sand pits in the whole township, this isn't replete with sand, you know, sand operations. So, it was designed to be included there, unlike the hundred-foot setback for zoning fixed, right? This was, hey, you know what, let's set five hundred to invite a discussion and an examination by neighbors, by the applicant, such as we're doing tonight. I guess I would ask you to keep an open mind about the fact that, you know, often you're dealing with ambiguities, or conflicting provisions, or fixed provisions like the hundred foot, this is one where they're saying, you know, five hundred, but you can make it less, so. I appreciate, and I believe you are keeping an open mind in that respect. The thing I'd wanna emphasize, though, is, is the, the why question, I think whenever we see a, a provision like five hundred feet back from a dwelling, why? What, what was the impetus behind that? Because it wasn't there when they began this operation, in fact, they're pretty well done with most of the rest of the pit, I can't speak to that as well as Kim can, but, I mean, some of you, if you know John Denhartig, you might fear for his house falling in. They had different rules at the outset, you didn't have, you had upwards of, I think Todd said, like thirty feet you could get to the, to the boundary line. You didn't have a dwelling setback back in the day. You added that somewhere along the way, I, I wanna say maybe two thousand and three, Todd can correct me. But, so we should've been digging back then, right? We wouldn't be having this discussion, but we are where we are presently, and I would say about that, why did it change? What is the why behind it? Now, I don't expect any of you were part of the council back then, or the commission, but I would submit reading the entirety of, of chapter seventeen, as is, is common in a lot of our zoning ordinance, it's for public health, safety, and welfare, right? I mean, it doesn't say as much in there, which begs the question, again, why, why five hundred feet, why not four hundred or one hundred? The question is public health, safety, and welfare, and what I'm hearing both from the audience tonight, whose concerns are understandable, we all own property, we're all neighbors, as well as, in some cases, applicants, right, for something. And I've heard it from a couple of you as well, in the commission, which is, it's not really fair to them, they bought houses, and they had expectations. Things related to view and aesthetics and, and the like, and I, Ms. Ozefield, I think hit it, and I think it was Mr. Highbour, even someone who opposed it acknowledged, look, they can and likely eventually will change the aesthetic view, and in fact, remove trees you wish weren't removed and the like, I think frankly, they've made it very park-like, but beauty is in the eye of the holder, and property rights are within the eye of the deedholder, right? And so, they will eventually make development, as it relates to, I would say, nicer lands and uses that will be probably very enhancing to everyone around, but that will require slopes to change, removal of, of some sand related to development, trees that will be taken out, et cetera. Pete, as someone pointed out, often plants trees, 'cause he loves beauty, but isn't required to do so. It's gonna change, and so, the foundation, if your foundation for denial of the request is, hey, I just don't think it's fair to the neighbors, I think that has to be founded on health, safety, and welfare. The only safety, health, or welfare issue I heard raised by a neighbor tonight, that you could say, okay, how is that addressed, was the concern about children. Now, you could say, well, they're trespassing, whether it's at one fifty or five hundred, but kids are kids, right? I think the fencing concern that was brought up, I think it was by Mr. Everly, you've got, you've got quite a bit in your permit already to our, you know, our client, about whether it be restoration, dust, noise, hours of operation, screening, fencing. Those things need to be enforced according to it, and I understand, Mr. Everly, that there's concern about, there's been a past transgression or two, right? I, I would say it's been a long period of time of operation, they aren't perfect, but they've been very good. I hope you wouldn't hold that past transgression against them here, and expectation of a future transgression, because I think the eyes of the neighbors are very focused here, as well as our own commitment to what you would approve. So, I, I don't think that should be a rationale either, so I, I want you to think in making your decision, yeah, it's discretionary, so you can't tell me what I have to, you know, to do one way or the other, but I'd say at least your decision ought to rest on five hundred feet because health, safety, and welfare is impacted in a different way than if it were at a hundred and fifty feet. Is it any noisier, is it any dustier, is it any less screened, is it any less safe? All the sentence I think are addressed within your permit, it wouldn't seem, it wouldn't seem that a unique situation or, or argument's been posited to say, yeah, no, that, that's gonna be, that's gonna cause a great concern for the health, safety, and welfare of these neighbors. I, I don't hear that, so, with all due respect, I believe that there is the case for, and you saw my examples of, you know, Gaines Township, my own township, and others, five hundred is really not found, not that you have to follow others, but I haven't found it in any of the local municipalities, the most I've seen is three hundred in Allendale, two hundred in a lot of places, a hundred in Gaines, none in Georgetown, at least from a dwelling, it's a hundred feet from a property line. Most don't have the dwelling requirement, most have the property line requirement, so they tend to fall between a hundred feet and wherever the distance, I think you said forty, fifty feet here. They tend to fall in that fifty to a hundred and fifty-foot range, by virtue of not speaking to where dwellings lie. So, we are here out of the norm, and again, that's your prerogative, but I think others have concluded that health, safety, and welfare is not materially impacted differently at, say, a hundred and fifty feet than it would be at five hundred feet. So, like I said, Mr. DeGroot's smarter than I am, I'll give him the floor. Thanks. Hi, Don. Good evening. Just a, a couple things on the technical part of the plan. As, as some have mentioned, the hundred-foot setback is, is what your code requires, and for the mining operation, we, we won't be going to that hundred-foot setback in all areas. I'll just note a, a feature, right where I'm pointing here, that's, that's kind of the knob, and if any, any of you have walked it, or the neighbors have walked it, it's, it's a pretty prominent site, that area has a knob, and then some steep grades that go to the north. What we're proposing to do as part of the mining, but also for future grading, for some concept that we've introduced as part of the package that was submitted, a, a layout, but that knob would be removed from, from the top going north. And then everything to the south would remain as is. And so, that area probably sees the most extensive vertical change because of the existing topography. Then as we move to the north, we, of course, tie into the grades that are presently on the floor of the previous pit that was mined when this was included in the mining operation.
Don, can I stop you there real quick?
Sure.
Are the bold lines the proposed?
Y- yes.
What's the underlying, I, I can't read it, so.
The high point is elevation seven ninety?
That's the new, what's the existing, underlying?
Same. At, at this point, at the hundred-foot setback, we're about at seven ninety, maybe a couple feet higher or lower, and then it would be that one-on-three slope down to seven sixty.
So, how much does it go up currently before? Cause it goes up to the north, correct?
Yes, it, it does about the same, only it's in, in a longer distance. Like, there's an existing seven sixty right here, and then the seven ninety is right here. And we're simply taking that seven sixty and pushing it toward that high point, and creating a steeper slope, which would be the, the permanent one-on-three slope that your ordinance requires. That's the most, the, the most vertical change that happens, but beyond that, it tapers back into the existing grades, and the gentleman that I think lived here at seventy-four thirty-five, he was talking about a, a natural.
And the gentleman that I think lived here at seventy-four, thirty-five, he was talking about a natural slope where the drainage occurs, and that's right here. And for most of that area, we would not be mining that. We may have to do something in the future for stormwater management or lot grading, but there's no plan to mine in that area as the contours indicate. And then the same thing in this area, anything to the west, that's kind of an open area, that's more of a level field. And at this point, there would be no mining for that, again, when the future development occurs and we come before this body to get that project approved. That's when extensive plans get prepared and grading plans and stormwater management plans. Then we'd have to do some sort of moderate grading there for the street construction and for the lot.
Help me out here. Again, small numbers. Right where your ring finger is, what's that distance from the house to the green line?
Hundred and seventy-four feet.
So, that currently is the closest you would ever want to be? Because according to what you just said, right there.
This dimension shows a hundred and fifty-four, but we'd likely be farther.
Which kind of goes back to my point of like seeing actual, whether we can agree that it actually gets abided by a totally different subject. I'm just trying to make sure we all understand where lines are and what you're trying to do and why you're trying to do it, and what it involves, looking at, because the, all the other houses other than the first two to the right and that one, I believe, are pretty close to five hundred feet, correct, from the green line?
No.
No? I can't.
Todd's.
It's too small.
Where's Todd's now?
Do you have that, your sketch? The numbers are too small.
Todd's red line is five hundred feet from all applicable dwellings.
Okay, alright.
Which essentially eliminates the mining because it leaves this small area, can I mark on this stuff?
Yep.
Leaves this small area for mining, and presently now that the slope is right here, it goes up from here. And this is where the mining was happening outside of the approved limits. But that's very little material, and it would essentially eliminate the mining of sand that is where it is. And that's always the thing, is the material is where it is, and we have to work with the communities on providing a mining operation that still protects the neighbors and it doesn't devalue their property. It's a temporary situation, but we need that sand for homes, for roadways, and for many things. And this is an operation that's been in place for over thirty years. It has everything set up. So, ideally, it's, and I think it was mentioned, that it's somewhat located in a location close to the highways for distribution to the construction sites. And so, yeah, we think we can provide a plan that both protects the neighbors and provides the resources that is very necessary for this community and others.
So, I don't know if this is a Don or a Kim question. If it's forty, help me, forty-three percent, forty-six percent mined, how much does this area represent? And where is the remaining a hundred percent of the material come from?
I don't know about the existing facility. I'll have to, Kim, I mean, I think the pond needs to be expanded yet. We've now have the permit to do that, so that pond can be expanded here. There's some mining that wants to take place in this area and in this area here.
Yeah, I mean, not sure that that's going to happen. But for sure, forty-five percent in that number that was given was not inclusive of anything that's over here. So, you know, for future, we do have some that will be coming, can you see that?
Yeah.
Right here, right here, here, and perhaps right here. But, you know, again, our road goes right through that. So, you know, say forty-five percent is probably a little bit more than that. You know, we are running out of materials. By the way, I'm Kim Hermanet. I represent Cherry Valley, so. So, you know, for our operation, and I think as Nathan mentioned it too, it really is, you know, the usefulness of, if people are bringing in clay and soils to fill in some of these areas, you know, kind of goes hand in hand. And I think Carson Galloway from Exalit included that, had Bookwater. You know, these guys are involved in projects all in Caledonia area. For them, to have access to materials for their projects is important as well. So, the forty-five percent, I didn't need to take over your spot, Don, but yeah, that's pretty much with that.
So, how much, back to the original question, how much would this area that we're talking about inside the five-hundred-foot line?
This right here?
I can't see it, so I can't tell you. Hold on.
Yeah, there we go.
There, yeah. How much material is actually there? I mean, five percent, ten percent?
Well, and that's, that's an engineer question. I don't really know. But, you know, one of the things, and I do come back to the future land use, and, you know, when the grading goes for, when we develop this, because we will develop it eventually, I believe. You know, the way that these grades are set right now, I mean, there's going to be movement regardless, just for the future plan. And I know that you guys received that in your packet as well.
I think that brings up a question to Todd or Ms. Laney about that Jody was touching on a bit. If this was not a PMR, if this was being developed out, let's say this is like Whitneyville, the development going in on Whitneyville, what would the developer, excavator, what could they do with the property if this was just like over on Whitneyville by the school?
Right.
Like, how much can they level? How much can they? I think that's in addition to what your question was.
Yeah, our ordinance, beyond what Laney described, our ordinance does not allow mass grading if it's toward a particular project or development. For example, if you have a site plan, you can't start on that until we, until this body approves it. However, if you were to make a really big dirt bike track, that would be permitted. I mean, not a public one, but a private one, you could level the trees and do as much as you want in terms of moving earth and stuff like that. Now, so erosion control, that type of thing would be under county purview. However, from a township perspective, that is what they can and can't do.
Is that further to what you were?
Can you clarify, how much is left in the bit? There's not forty-five percent left? I think that's confusing.
Yeah.
There's maybe five.
Yeah, there's not, yes, correct, Nathan.
Almost gone.
Yeah. So, the materials, yes, there is a small amount of materials here and here, and here. But, yes, there is, the materials are running out. But I do want to also get back to, like, one of the things that Laney was mentioning, by right, you know, this property, by right, you can have grading with an approved site plan. And, you know, we did work with Don, and it's, you know, we put together a, just an idea. And I live very close. I, we border the land mining operation. I, you know, I, by right, there's what, forty-seven acres there? I mean, truly, we have a two-acre minimum. I mean, we could throw in twenty-some, you know, lots here and clearcut it, rip everything out, and just start with that. But, you know, I mean, I, the preservation of the property is important to me, very important. I, we have a nice development. I would love to see a nice development here down the road. You know, so, part of me is like, the two go hand in hand, do it, you know, I don't know, so.
I just want to have a big picture. I do want to point out, there's a couple. So, in your, in your January six memo to us, your item two waiver, you have your waiver to reduce the current setback from five hundred feet occupied to a hundred feet. I hope that's, I mean, it's not part of the thing, but it is a hundred and fifty feet is what you're asking for, not a hundred feet.
Well, and to be clear, I was going, it lined up with a hundred and fifty feet from a dwelling versus a hundred feet from the rural residential. So, the verbiage in which I used was more, what Todd had stated is more correct, a hundred and fifty feet from a dwelling.
Alright. And in addition, the, help me here, John, you had it.
Yeah, on your annual report that you submitted, I don't know, a couple of weeks ago, that's where we get the forty-five percent of the total material removal in your PMR plan.
Yeah.
So, I don't understand how that conports with only having five percent left.
And I will say, I put that report together, and I was, I probably didn't calculate that correctly. I should have referred to my engineer for that. But, quite frankly, I don't know personally how to manage that. I put in a number, and I didn't verify that number very clearly with Don, and he could have given me a more accurate number. So, that's, yes.
Hi, Don.
And I don't know that the report is required. I appreciate that you gave it to us. Maybe you could correct it and resubmit it with the right number.
It is required, and I, yeah. So, I will, I will correct that.
I think that the key area of additional mining is to expand the westerly lake. There was some mention of three lakes, but that was the original application, and there's only two lakes proposed at this point. And this was a possible expansion, but that's, I think that that has some material that maybe isn't all sand. We know this area has sand, and that's where the most efficient mining would take place. So, perhaps if you add all three of those, I still don't see the four blue areas in the pond. It's probably still less than forty-five percent, just maybe a surface area. That may have been a reference. But the mining here is pretty much done. We've got to maintain the driveway here until it's completed. Then that material may even be used for site grading rather than for removals. But, yeah, I think besides some of the sand here, they're starting to run a bit shy as far as volume available for sand.
And on that note, to clarify, you know, we did get, go through some extensive hydrogeological studies with Eagle, and we did get approval to expand this lake, not this lake. And we do not have any plans to input another lake at this point. You know, so, there was reference that we were going to put another lake in here, and there was some idea of that. But we aren't going to go and put in that request with Eagle.
Alright, do you have anything else to add?
No, I really don't. I just, you know, I do think it is important, like, you know, from a standpoint of, you know, by our right as a landowner. And by all due respect to all the neighbors, you know, I do understand where they're coming from, from, you know, their perspective. But, you know, we also, you know, do run an operation, and we are going to be looking at future development. And so therefore, we would like to take that, have you guys take that into consideration in your decision.
Alright, thank you. Don, did you have anything? We, Kim cut you off, but she's the owner.
I did.
Why, I just wanted to clarify that, you know, if that five-hundred-foot setback from the home sites would essentially reduce the mining operation to a very small amount. But the site grading, that's done as part of the mining operation, if it were allowed to be per our plan here. And we can clarify the actual mining limits, if that would be helpful so that we're not maintaining that hundred-foot setback along the entire boundary, which is permitted. But I think we can remove some of the area here, we can remove some of the area here. But it's in this area that the existing grades are required to be adjusted to perform a development. And one way or another, that would happen. It just makes the mining operation more of a desirable step one to head in that direction of development. Just looking through some of the other questions that we talked about, the three lakes, traffic that really doesn't apply to this application, someone had concern about traffic. Again, we'll be coming back for any type of site development. The limits of mining, we can clarify that as part of a document that can be included, and Todd and Laney can review that. Yeah, I think those are the main items that we wanted to present to this board at this time.
Alright, thank you.
Let me ask one question.
Yes, go for it.
Because as we talk about health and safety and the issue that was kind of brought up from the homeowners of kids, and I see kids back in the sand pit, and whoever said they're, you know, kids, kids don't know trespassing. They're going to go wherever they can. What would be your fencing? Like, what would you do in terms of that area to secure it?
I think this area would probably be the most extreme grading that you would see. And as we work our way from north, from north to south, southwest, there could be fencing placed within a hundred feet of that cut slope and moved periodically to help protect from any, yeah, from anybody getting close to that drop-off during the excavation period. That's, that could be, that could be one alternative.
But that's already in the PMR.
But that's supposed to be there now, and on the other parts of the site too.
Right, correct.
Todd, do you want to chat, talk to that?
Yeah, the, what is required is protection at the top of the slope. However, the method of that is flexible.
That's right, because that changed, didn't it? We had fencing in there.
Yeah. Fencing has proven to be unmanageable, but the idea of stacking brush.
I appreciate that, Todd. I'd forgotten that. I forgot, because that was in there and that came out.
So, yeah, basically brush being piled up along what would be the base of the mine is the best method that we've done. However, I guess, I've also seen more hardy fences being placed, you know, even along a property line or something like that would be a possibility if that was, you know, saw to be needed.
I'll make a motion to recommend the Township Board an amendment of the PMR permit to include parcels forty-one dash twenty-three dash zero-nine, dash three twenty-six, dash zero zero-two, and forty-one dash twenty- zero-zero-two and forty-one dash twenty-three dash zero-nine dash three-zero-one dash zero-zero-eight into the PMR. Again, however, the mining setback shall remain five hundred feet from an occupied dwelling per ordinance for the health and safety of the neighbors.
Support.
Who said that? Sorry, Lindsey. Motion by Bradshaw, support by Lindsey, for recommendation to the board. Does any further discussion on this topic? Roll call.
I, I do have, I do have a thought, and, you know, some of the things that have been brought up make a lot of sense, that if this is gonna be developed, it will need that area to be reworked. But Todd, how does this work? As long as it's PMR, they can't do mass grading for residential construction, right? Or what, is there a way to accomplish both of these things at once?
Technically, you, you actually don't need to rezone it to go back to a, you know, two-acre residential development.
So, it might be persuasive for us if we saw an actual development plan of how this is gonna be built, and the related grading that has to happen as part of the mining, those two things together might be a little more persuasive than just give us free range to, you know, go within a hundred and fifty feet of a house.
I think the distinction that you're, you might be getting at is the ability to sell sand, if you're grading it and there are significant cuts related to the, the grading. Usually, you'll, you try to balance the site, but if, if you were to design it to have excessive sand, then that would be a way to do it.
Only other thing that strikes me is if we're getting down to five percent of the resource left, it's probably time that we would expect starting to see some effort put into redevelopment. So, that's my, my comment.
Yeah, I, I can, would support that, and I think, and then as part of that, what would that, what would the, clarify kind of what that mining piece would look like against that? Then it feels like it's step one A and step one B.
To the, to the finish line.
Correct.
Which, which doesn't really relate to the, the motion, but it's just something I wanted to hear.
It was kind of the point I was making a long time ago.
Did I not listen to?
No, but that's okay, I'm used to it.
I think it kind of relates to the motion.
It does.
Because then it might be a table with added information from the applicant.
Can the applicant just apply again later? They can change the grading plan whenever they want, right, Todd?
Seeing no further comment, roll call. Maysfield?
No.
McLean?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Everly?
Yes.
Lindsey?
Yes.
Cutler?
Yes.
Curtis votes yes. Motion to recommend to the board passes. Item seven, no one finished business, public comment extended up to five minutes if somebody would like to talk for five minutes. Here's your time. Dale?
Yeah, I just wanna say, Dale Hermanet, I just wanted to say, I appreciate what you said, because I think, I think it comes down to, in simplistic terms, we're dealing with a guy that likes to move dirt, he likes to get out on a bulldozer, he likes to move, he does a very nice job, those that say he didn't, I, I, I don't know what you're looking at, that blows my mind. It's beautiful back there, it's a gorgeous place. I do think there's a couple of choices, and Don pointed it out, the reason there's this undulation in this here, when Pete looks at this land, and, and you're looking at what is the sand available, the sand here, that's basically been mined, I mean, that's, that's the area that's already been done, it's flat, where all the sand is, is within that area of what he's talking about. That would also lend itself exactly where, when he starts, if, if he does go down the path and decides to put an addition in here, a housing addition, that's all gonna have to be taken out anyway. I love trees as much as anybody, I would way, way rather have a hundred-foot of tree lying to that property than coming in with a housing, and I don't know how that'll look, but it's a possibility that there's gonna be less than a hundred feet of trees there. When they come into the housing and they put a, a housing addition in there, right now you've got a buffer. I don't know what that'll look like, but I can say it, it may not be a hundred feet. It, it may be more advantageous to put it up the line, so I just want, what we're talking about, I think everybody wants the same thing, I just don't think it's coming out that way. So I think you are on the right track of, well, what does that look like? Because I think he needs that extra.
I think, I think the reason the buffer's there is because of the activity that's going on, and not everybody wants that in their backyard.
Yep.
And so that's why the five-hundred feet still exists. At some point, yes, it's gonna be developed, it's gonna become a residential area, and whether it even stays our, our, we don't know at this point. It could, it could be rezoned, it could be a PUD, we don't know how that's all gonna be developed.
Absolutely, and, and that goes to those points, it could be a PUD, it could be fifty homes back there. You know, so I just wanna make sure everybody's aware of that as we're looking at this in the way that, this is how it is now, Pete's just trying to move some dirt, which he's going to do anyway if he puts a housing addition in there.
Thank you, Dale.
Can I speak now?
You have five minutes to talk about whatever you'd like to talk about.
If I could ask, how many of you have physically walked that piece of property? You have any, okay, so when you're talking about, and, and how recently has that been?
Today?
I mean, if you're talking about a hundred and fifty feet, a hundred and eighty feet, I mean, do you really, can, can you conceptualize what that really means to the homeowner, or five-hundred feet, unless you're really there? How much dirt's gonna be gone? What's the slope really going to be? I mean, you look at that map, but that, to me, that doesn't tell you how these people are gonna be affected. Your question about where the fences are gonna be, I've lived next to that sand pit for fifty years, there has not been one fence in the whole time that that sand pit has been there, whether it be Dykma, whether it be Veltings, whether it be Den Hardig, no fences. There's been sheer drops for weeks on end, months on end, no fences. So unless you physically walk that area and really know what you're talking about and can visualize how that new piece is going to affect the neighbors, I just, I just cannot trust your decision. I just don't think you have enough input, enough facts, enough visual of what that really means to the neighbors around you. If it's not in your backyard, I guess it doesn't really, you know, make an impact, but for those folks, it really does. And I've been putting up for fifty years, and they're just gonna start, and it's not gonna be pretty. And the restoration is almost nonexistent.
You, you, you may have missed the fact that we didn't approve it.
Thank you.
May I, quickly, so, I didn't hear any findings that related specifically to health, safety, and welfare, and I guess I would ask you the question, whether you would choose to answer it or just think about it. What would it take for you to exercise that discretion that was obviously built into your rules about lessening that five-hundred feet? I, I don't hear from any of you who voted against it that there could be a situation where you would exercise that authority, because I can't imagine somebody handling the pit as well as it has been here in, in this example, I know you have one other pit in town, may not have many in the future, may need one soon, but yeah, what would it take?
I think our, our decision, I'm sorry.
No, we're not answering questions.
And just one last comment, thank you for the, um, vote, really appreciate it, and again, health and safety for my kids and my neighbor's kids, who has like four, and also, when we're talking about a mining operation versus clearing, you know, proper, clearing land out for residential, those are two very different things, in my opinion, you know, mining operation is a continue, it's an operation. So, so I view those as different, I just wanted to, you know, make sure, because I know that direction, John, you were going into, and I think that's a, you know, a very good positive direction, is to see what that plan will look like, because that's different than a mining operation.
Thank you. Come on up.
I think you got to a point somewhere here, which I think, this isn't going away. I mean, this property's not going away, this mine's not going away, this future development's not going away. I really think whoever kind of laid it out that you just needed an all-inclusive plan, and how do you get to that development, and how much sand can you take out of here while you're doing that same thing? Because it's, they're gonna go hand in hand, and I think that's a great resolution, whoever commented on that, instead of just saying, hey, mine it to a hundred feet of the property line, put it together, put it together, what's the future use, what's the future development, and how can we take out the sand that they would like to take out in the meantime to make everything flow, to make everything make sense? Because I think it can be done together.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah, I got a half-hour speech I wanna give. My name's Dave Reed, I live on the lake here, I've been out here for about two years. I moved out here from Ada, I grew up on Nap and Grand River Drive, anybody's familiar with that? I was out there when the peace belt lines, the single lane going north and south, so development happens. I think if this gets brought to a committee again in the future, you gotta let Kim and Don and the rest of their team present their case, because I think the mine is made up before they even got up here and talked. And like Kim said, they can, they can wipe every tree out on here, we hope they don't do that, I love the nature, I love the trees, I love walking through here. You might as well let Pete mine that, get some value out of the land there, and then develop a nice, smaller housing community. So, if this comes before the board again, I would encourage you, listen to them first, listen to both sides first before you start making decisions.
Thank you. Anyone else? Going once? Going twice? All right, we'll close the extended public comment period. Commissioner comments, any commissioner comments for tonight?
Can I just make a comment on process, just while the public is here still, that this was a recommendation to the Township Board? So this is not the final step, this does go to the Township Board at an upcoming meeting, they meet the first and third Wednesdays. So please keep an eye out for the agendas that are posted here at the hall and on the Township website, you won't get another notice in the mail when it goes to the Township Board. The Township Board considers the recommendation of the Planning Commission, if the Township Board wishes to go in a different direction from the recommendation today, the Board has to refer that change back to the Planning Commission and ask for a report and a, and a timeframe for that report. And after receiving the report, then the Board can approve, deny, or approve with conditions the permit. So, I just want everyone to be aware of that process, so that you don't leave here with other, you know, surprises, and you know what those next steps are.
Any other comments from commissioners tonight? I didn't see any correspondence, any staff updates that you have? All right, item number eleven, motion to adjourn. Motion by Bradshaw, support by Maysfield, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, we are adjourned. Thank you, commissioners.